Check.
All right. Thank you very much, Kevin. I'll call to order the meeting of the Kattati Plan Commission for Monday, the 20th of March and have the city clerk do attendance roll call.
Commissioner Hancock.
Yes, yeah.
Vice Chair Gilardi.
Yes.
And Chair Savage.
Yes.
We'll show Commissioner Berman and.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the minutes. The minutes from the March 6th meeting are up first. Does anyone have any questions or comments on those?
No.
If not, do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Public comment first.
Public comment on the minutes? Okay.
Yes.
Is there any public comment on the minutes?
Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on approval of the minutes, please use the raise hand icon at this time. And we do have a public comment. Lori, you have the floor.
Hi, this is Lori Alderman again. You don't have webcasts once again. And so I'm on Zoom, so please fix that. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Alderman. We are experiencing some technical difficulties with the encoding equipment. This meeting is available publicly in the council chamber as well as via Zoom. Thank you. Chair Savage, that will end public comment.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the Mace after the March 6th meeting?
I'll move. We approve the March 6th minutes.
I'll second.
All right, we'll have a roll call.
Commissioner Hancock.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gilardi.
Yes.
Chair Savage.
Yes. Okay, on the January 17th, we don't have a forum of members who attended that meeting, so we'll table that until the next meeting. Any changes to the agenda, Noah?
No changes, Chair Savage.
Okay.
Can I raise a point? Certainly, since I won't be there next time, would you actually? If I have a need somewhere.
We've asked the new members to view the video of the meeting and then they'll be able to approve the minutes once that's completed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Neil. All right, no changes to the agenda, correct? And then for oral and written communications, this is when the public or people on Zoom will have an opportunity to make their comments, state their name and address, and have comments on items that are not already on the agenda for the sitting. So do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to comment?
Thank you, Chair Savage, speaking to our Zoom attendees. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. And we have a comment. Lori, you have the floor.
Just another mistake. We do not have to give our names and our addresses for making public comment. This is against that. That is against the Brown Act. Thank you. Bye.
Chair Savage, that will end public comment.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Right, moving on to matters at hand. And up first, we have a review of the capital improvements for the general plan. I'll turn that over to Craig.
The members of the commission, Craig Scott, planning, Public Works Director, City Engineer. We will see a presentation, slides deck for this presentation that'll be coming up momentarily. Every year, as part of the budgetary process, the city prepares a five-year capital improvements program. And there are regulatory requirements requiring us to bring it before Planning Commission to find conformity of the projects with the goals and objectives presented in the city's general plan. Next slide, please. Generally, this will be a pretty short presentation outline here. We'll go over the requested action, what's being asked of you tonight, the purpose of the capital improvement program. A review of, brief overview of the projects that are in the five-year CIP and extends from the next fiscal year that's coming up of '23, '24, which starts July 1st. And then ends on '27, '28. We will refer, there's shorthand in our CIP referring to the fiscal years just by their final year. So there it's fiscal year '24 through fiscal year '28. What the next steps are, and then the recommended recommendation from staff for action by the planning commission. Next slide, please. So Section 65401 of the Government Code, which is the planning and zoning law, requires the middle of the city's capital improvement program to the planning commission for a finding of conformity with the general plan. Next slide, please. The five-year plan is designed to be both a financial and planning document. For the city, it's to assist with the orderly development of the city and concurrent construction of public facilities and infrastructure to support that development. And then the implementation is to be consistent with the goals and policies of the city, including the general plan. And it implements the master plans. So first comes the general plan, and then the infrastructure master plans come along. Water and sewer master plan, the bike pad master plan. We have a parks capital plan that support the that identify the improvements needed to support the general plan. And next slide, please. So these are supporting documents. You'll see that the Parks Capital Plan midway through was done fairly recently, and it outlines improvements here at the Civic Center as well as the major parks around the city. The bike and pedestrian master plan is, the latest version of it is April in 2014, and that's being updated now. We have a bike and pad wayfinding master plan, which was done fairly recently in 2019. And then there's a pavement preservation capital improvement program, which is updated annually. And so those really help to identify what improvements are needed, like over the build-out period of the general plan, and then they're prioritized and timed to, so we can pull the ones that are needed the most now, and that helps to formulate the CIP. Next slide, please. Okay, so now we're getting into the the different collections of projects. And so we've organized them by the water sewer, by the different divisions, as we have them in the city. The first one is our relevant to our our water utility, and it's the relevant goal is within the community services and facilities element of the general plan, which has a goal to a provide an adequate supply of clean, safe, fresh, and environmentally sound water to existing and planned users within the city's service area. So this includes not only expanding capacity for future development, or ensuring that that capacity is available, but also renewal replacement of the aging water infrastructure. Next slide, please. So here's the list. You'll see a water main pipeline replacement that is not only to replacing, replace an aged aging component in the distribution system, but to provide fire flow capacity, and that's slated for fiscal year '24. The SCADA water improvements, that's the control system for the water. You've got pumps and tank levels. And there's a computer system to control the operation of those pumps. That's called the SCADA. And so that's about eight years old now, and it, the components are getting obsolete, and it's very difficult to find folks to maintain them. So that's within the CIP, the first year. The construction water filling station, we're calling it an ATM because contractors can go and fill up their water tanks by plugging in a code. So we've got that in the first year. Well, one A, well, three treatment renewal replacement. We've got tank recoding, obviously renewal of that facility. Another water main replacement project. Distribution system monitoring, which helps us collect real-time production data and compare it to the real-time demand data. And you can get, you can get a really good idea there of water losses. If you compare the two, they should, in an ideal world, match up, but they don't because water is lost through unmetered connections, fire hydrants, then also just losses, leak leaks. Then the next three are related to a replacement tank, but we call the Cypress Tank at the end of Nelson Lane. So you need a booster pumping station, a replacement tank, and then the water main to connect it to the system. And finally, the city's water master plan envisions a fourth well, well number four. And so that's out there in the fifth year of the CIP. I think what's important to note is there are costs that are included in the CIP for each of these, and we're not committing. The planning commission's action tonight does not commit the city. For that matter, the city council's action later on does not commit it, the city to appropriating any funds for years two through five. It's only year one that ends up in the city's budget where those numbers are. They've been fine tuned, and then money and funding sources are appropriated for those specific projects in year one. Okay, next slide, please. So we move on the sewer, and the relevant goal is still in the community services and facilities element of the general plan. It's to maintain adequate sewage conveyance infrastructure to meet existing and projected demand throughout the life of the general plan. The city has a collection system, but we are a member of the subregional wastewater treatment system. So we are are in responsibilities for the collection conveyance of our sewage to that treatment system, but we don't have a treatment plant. So you'll, next slide, please. You'll see these improvements are improvements to the collection system, so aging pipelines. And then the first one is install backup generators at two of our four lift stations. We do have areas of the city where it doesn't all flow by gravity to the subregional system we have. So there's four locations where we have to pump it up so that it can go back in the gravity flow to the sewage treatment plant. Sewer pipeline repairs, we just saw one recently on West Sierra, Sierra Avenue, where we're finding these pre-hold pipelines that the city inherited from the county, the transite pipe. They've settled over time, and they've degraded through the fumes and gases that the sewage emits. And so what we're And so what we're finding is the pipes do, do degrade and such, such that they will collapse and piece of the pipe will be missing and the joints will be offset. And so that lets in groundwater and surface water, and then we pay for that extra flow from the treatment plant. So we're methodically going through evaluating our system for what the next high priority pipe is to replace. The next one for their sewer repairs in this fiscal year coming up will be Cypress behind us here. And then there's a number of other pipelines. And what's complicated that process is the city's aggressive program to pave our streets, because we, what we don't want to do is go through and pave a street and then go ahead and dig it up to repair a sewer. So it, it sounds easy, but it's not. Time those right. And you'll see, we, we, if it wasn't for the weather, we would have had this pipeline in West Sierra Avenue. I'm just pointing behind us because that's where physically a pipeline is. We would have had just a few weeks between the completion of the pipeline and then the street would have been repaved. But we've had rain delaying the street construction project, so. But the timing is key there. And that, that about does it for the sewer projects. It extends pretty much consistently. We skip a year or two, but we just, because of our funding limitations. And next slide, please. So then we move into appropriately the streets. And this relevant general plan goal is within the circulatory element. That is to ensure the city's circulation element is made, network is maintained and improved over time to support build out of the general plan in a manner, manner that is consistent with the city's circulation diagram. So there's a diagram in the general plan on classifying each of the streets and where new streets are planned. And those new streets are generally the impetus for those are a new development. So it's not like the city goes out and builds a street and then we wait for development, the development will be the moving force for that street to be constructed. And next slide, please. The list is a lot longer, but it's, I've condensed it basically by listing different years for the for the, so the street improvements project are really five projects, but they're represented here in one line. We've got the park and ride replacement, which is contingent upon the hotel purchasing our property. Once we get those proceeds, the city under its agreement with Caltrans is to replace the lost park and ride spots in that location with a park and ride lot in Petaluma and one in the airport area near town of Windsor. Street improvements project, we we have a, the pavement management program, which I said gets updated annually. There is a slide at the end of the slide deck, which shows what we have in mind right now for the next five years. It's, it could change, but we are getting to the point where after about three years, we will have rehabilitated all of our streets in poor condition. And it's, it's where we want to be, where we're doing much lower cost projects to sear seal. It's just a fraction of the cost of rehabbing a street, which is milling it, putting in a really thick new asphalt layer or even completely rebuilding it. And so we'll be, we're getting to the, the end of that process. And we'll be spending a lot less each year on maintaining our streets. We've got the bicycle pedestrian safety improvements. As the, the other purpose of the planning commission, I understand you're, you're also the bike pad planning commission advisory body. So every year we have a bike pedestrian safety improvements project. And these are projects that you won't necessarily find in a plan. It's just during the course of the year. Safety projects come into focus and any, any kind of a fix like a, an enhanced crosswalk. Re a speed feedback sign or refreshing or striping on our streets will come up. And so it's, it's got something like a seventy thousand dollar budget. And so that's one way that we can be very responsive to the residents in the community. So we, we've seen those come about year to year. The one that, in the year that was just wrapping up now. You will see a crosswalk on Valparaiso near Lund Hill. And then the traffic signal at Valparaiso in Old Redwood Highway is going to be reconfigured, not the big mast arms, but the ones, the single poles on the corners. Those aren't in the ideal location. So these are not like giant capital projects, but they are very responsive. And kind of like they, they go right to fixing near-term issues. Class one pathway maintenance. That will, there's a, we have class one existing pathways through town. This one addresses linking up the one in front of Putnam Park to Park Avenue, then another from on West School Street, where approaches Richardson Lane. There is an existing bike path there and it's showing its age. And so the revitalized, the pathway maintenance would be to either keep it as an asphalt path or put in, replace the path that's there now with a decomposed granite with a binder in it. That's what we have envisioned for that, which would be not this next fiscal year, but the following one fiscal year of twenty-five. Then we've got gateway signage improvements. The one year coming up will be getting the low-cost post signs and putting the city's new logo on those. And then the higher cost one, the monuments would be for twenty-six and twenty-seven. And so we've just, we're just wrapping up a preliminary concept design of a gateway at the Commerce Boulevard gateway. So we could potentially see one of that monument science that has already gone through the public workshop process at that location. But we've got several more gateways in the city. And so that would be spanning over a couple of years to get those installed. There's a traffic signal proposed for William George Old Redwood Highway. It's a bottleneck through town. And so we're envisioning, envisioning that for fiscal year twenty-seven. And that could shift around a little bit based on funding. We're looking to get some funding from mitigation with Rutter Park and the new development coming in, in Rutter Park. And then more gateway signage. That's up there twice. Next slide, please. Okay, we move over to drainage. This one's not very interesting this year because we have no planned drainage system improvements for the next five years. That could change. It could change as we see requirements from implementation of the city's stormwater permit with the, the state. Because they do have trash elements in their low-impact development require, requirements right now. For example, they're, they've, they've asked us to review existing street design. And are, are there any opportunity, for any opportunities to enhance low-impact development? That is, slow the flow runoff from the streets. Hold it, you know, let the sediment, any sediment settle down and maybe percolate that into the ground. So it's not committing us the permit at this time to spend money on any retrofitting, but our permit has now expired and for the last year and a half, the city, the county, Santa Rosa, the other co-permittees have been negotiating with the regional board to, for a new permit. And you can certainly expect the new permit to have new requirements in it. So once we know what those are, we would start seeing projects show up here. The relevant goal is when the, in the conservation element of the general plan. It's to prioritize the use of natural features such as bioswales, vegetation, retention ponds and other measures to remove surface water pollutants prior to discharge into surface waters. So that's a very, this, this is a, a goal that's kind of evolved over time. If you look at all the manuals in the sixties and seventies, it's all about getting rid of the water as fast as you can to prevent flooding. But we still want to prevent flooding, but the emphasis now is on the more frequent, low-intensity events to, to, to hold on to that water and allow it to percolate. And then also if a property gets developed and it was undeveloped land to replicate the runoff from that land as it is today. And it's unimproved state with trees and grasses and everything else on it. To not have that water flow any faster off that property once it's fully developed. Next slide, please.
Would, would you take questions now? Or do you want to wait till the end, particularly about that element?
I, I could take, I think now would be a good time for this element.
And it was a, a sort of a challenging element, the sort of the stormwater and the water quality. But we have got Putnam Park that has been looked at and there is a, a wetlands, small wetlands on the southern section. And then there's an opportunity there. So would that fit under something within the water permit that could be both a combination of a benefit for the residents in, in the way the water moves. Add also something for water quality. It, it drains a lot of that Valparaiso hill and a lot of those areas that come off very fast. I don't know, I'm just.
Right, so I mean, just the categorical statement that we, we require our, the developers to incorporate LID as I just mentioned. And then we, we're no different. If we have a project and we're improving a park or anything on city property. We have to abide by those same rules too. What's what's really beneficial about the way the city's developed is our parks and our roadways, especially on the west side of town have these road, these bioswales. I mean, we could call them ditches, but they're really bioswales. And they collect the water and they are, they're already, they're way advanced in, in time. They, they already act as LID features. So that the worry there, it's not specific to your question, but the worry there is as if, if there's property owners that want to fill in those ditches to do curb gutter sidewalk. We don't want to backslide and, and have, have the LID functionality be any less, you know, effective than what it is today, right?
I'm referring specifically if you're negotiating a new permit, the Putnam Park. And, and I think there are some accelerated permits for those areas, but that, that area where it's in the park, I know I've questioned the regional water quality control board and they were a little bit shocked. You mean, somebody's asking questions about this? But that is an area that is fuzzy, I guess. It could be part of a permit negotiation, I think. I might be way out of my depth here.
Yeah.
Specifically Putnam Park, because there is a lot of potential development. And I mean, maybe this is a budgetary item as well. There's a lot of potential element up on those hills, Katati Hills. But that area could be reserved. I know there's already been some discussions between the Laguna Foundation and the city. That some of those areas could become more of a stormwater, a dual-use stormwater feature. Natural, natural vegetation. But anyway, I just, I, that's the question.
Yeah, I would be surprised if that was incorporated into the Parks Capital Plan. But I do think it'd be why, it'd be wise of us to, to look at that, those elements. It's, it's possible leverage for those uses.
I know I've raised it a couple of times.
Yeah, okay.
Meetings, you know, just is that, that there is, there is a stormwater and depending which way you look at it, it can be a stormwater feature, in which case it's not the Laguna. And that has a very distinctive advantage, it turns out. As not requiring permits to Yeah, it's comes over grounds and it's essentially something that Katati has created that runs along the side of Putnam Park. And it has some, it has some, it runs small area right by the parking where it is essentially a wetlands and it needs, needs some, I know there's been some thinking of that, but it just seems to me that that might be an area that you know, a possible put in the permit discussion.
Right. Yeah, thank you for that. And that's really good to know. And then definitely it's, it's not a good idea if, as we do the Putnam Park improvements to like eliminate whatever function, the beneficial function that it has today. So we'll be very aware of that.
Some design elements left for the future.
Right.
Where, where that could be modified. Could fulfill the purpose of slowing it. Perhaps with a Beaver analog.
Or even enhance its function, right? Next slide, please. This is a very interesting slide in the projects. Next slide. Okay, now we move into parks. And this is within the open space element, maintain and expand the park and recreation network. Next slide, please. We have a busy five-year CIP in terms of parks. We're wrapping up Katati Park improvements with the restroom and improvements to the path, adding a fitness area and a tot lot, replacing all the playground equipment. A big shelter structure. But that project, we're unable to wrap up this fiscal year. And so it's, that's why we see it on this plan for twenty-five as well. But it'll be early twenty-five. We're looking at that wrapping up in about August. Following that, we'll have we've got, Putnam Park should be up there. Oh yeah, okay, Putnam Park, number one. We'll, we'll, we'll have workshops pretty soon on Putnam Park, what we're just talking about. And those workshops will help formulate the design. And once design is completed, we'll get a contractor out there to make those improvements. Katati Park I just mentioned. We've got workshops coming up for the Verona Falletti Ranch Barns. And similarly, following the workshops, the design would progress. And followed by the construction, Civic Center Park Capital improvements. These are all in the capital master plan. That'll take the first phase, what's identified as the first phase of improving the civic center. That thereby the, the ball fields. Making improvements out there. We've got a single project, yeah, a cater basketball field resurfacing. So that's just self-explanatory. And then lastly is La Plaza reunification, which is implementing the downtown specific plan. So that's out in years twenty-seven, twenty-eight. That can move out even further. It's really dependent on funding for that. And then there's going to be a long lead-up time with outreach to the stakeholders and public to make that happen. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, buildings. I think this is our, our last area. So this ties into the community services and facility element of the general plan. Provide high-quality public services and facilities to all residents, businesses and visitors in Katati. So we're talking about our, our, our building. So the civic center, the, the city hall we're in now, the community center. The Katati Room, the police building. The Train Depot. We've done a lot of improvements this year with the re-roofing of the community center. We saw windows being replaced here at city hall. We're soon going to see We saw windows being replaced here at City Hall. We're soon going to see both buildings be painted. So. Next slide, please. What you'll see with with the capital program is. Just, you know, a thin, not not very highly, not a lot of projects coming up because we've kind of. Done a lot recently, but we are looking at creating these, the parking lot behind City Hall. We have a concept plan that's been selected for E V stations, adding more parking, reconfiguring it to be more efficient. Because right, right now, the the striping is is really faded, the trees have uproot uplifted the paving and it just is in need of. Revamping. So that's what this project envisions and that's for the next fiscal year coming up in year one. So you'll see this project. Be proposed by staff for adoption in the the city's annual budget. Next slide, please. Okay, so that wraps up the. Brief description of the projects and they're basically to find conformity with the general plan goals and objectives. And the next step is to bring the C I P before city council and it's going to be embedded in the budget packet. So it's not specifically presented. But it will be referred to and as part of that packet. Next slide, please. I I do want to say, once the city council adopts. The budget and includes the first year of the C I P, the C I P will be reformulated and brought back. Again, next year, you'll see some shifting around in those out years. We'll see projects have been completed and then. Another set of projects being brought in and that out year. So it's a very interact interactive process. And then as each project nears, like. Goes through the process, there are check in points with the council on the. Awarding the design contract and the certainly the construction contract in elements of it, each project. That are really specific to bike pet improvements will be brought before this body. For example, we're looking at bringing before council. The Redwood Drive Cypress Project to in April to talk about. How the bike pad bicycle lanes are being enhanced or what the plan is to enhance those bicycle lanes on Cypress and on Redwood Drive. So there's quite a lot we're finding that can be done within the existing footprint of a roadway because that's the. That's a limitation of these. Street preservation projects. We're not looking at widening or regrading the roadway. We're. We we have to necessarily stick within the confines of the roadway to. To keep within our budget to do the primary objective, which is to pave the the roads, keep to keep the paving, preserve the pavement. Okay, so at this point, that's at the end of my presentation. We've got the recommendation from staff, which is to adopt a resolution that's in before you. Finding the proposed city's five year capital improvements program in forms of the city's general plan. So that's what we're asking tonight. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have, any additional questions. Okay, thank you, Craig. Do we have additional questions from the commission? Mission or hand con?
Yes, thank you. I really appreciate having the C I P come forward and and I mean, it's been a progress over time. So it really gives an opportunity to sort of look at it. I mean. I've been also phrasing the active transportation side, which is, you know, the pedestrian, the bicycle and anything where people are actively walking and doing their. Transportation through that. And I know you're speaking to some of those issues. One of the questions I've got is how do we, the the. There's a lot of work that is very budgetary intensive, the redoing the roads and things. I mean, really appreciate the technical. Effort that goes into that, but where there are areas that. Maybe wouldn't cost a lot. They aren't very visible, but there'd be real benefit for having them noted. So this aspect really of having some safety features built in. The pedestrians, you you know, element from the view of the. The active transportation person, the walker, the cyclist. Where those are important and where there have been already public input on them. One question is, how do we capture it and reflect on these plans? So I know that we have done a number of outreaches already in in different areas and. I really appreciate the new shark's teeth that have gone out on the roads. So all the roads coming up, pedestrian crossings. And I saw we've got them, but Petaluma hasn't recently. And that's been a real benefit. And what I what I came up with with that was was that it was the sightlines, you know, standing at the side of the road. With the shark's teeth that sort of indicate to the vehicles where to stop. It's the fact that you can see the vehicles have stopped, you can, and also that there's enough of a sightline. The the vehicles will be traveling at a safe speed in Katati. So how do we capture? For some of these plans moving forward, those elements that are newer. Some of them are already in the, I I guess, if you like, the Caltrans tick list. That a lot of people have been talking about, but that's not visible right now. I mean, it's not visible that that's the effort. So. So to back up to the bigger picture, you know, there's been, New York Times has criticized across. All states, the level of. You know, pedestrian safety. California has also got that issue and it's raised it through project zero. So. It's how do we capture that detail and have it visible in the plans? So that. It's 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 not waiting till after the project's finished, or like we had recently with the West Sierra, we've got a discussion up. And at that point, we say, ah gee, you know, it would be nice to have something or the other, but. It's not possible to change the plans, you know, it could have made an input two years earlier. So how do we capture that level of of detail where it's a change management issue, not necessarily a budgetary issue? For some of the areas where we're trying to raise essentially safety standards.
That that is, that is a challenging thing because. A a lot of us will drive around and and go to different cities and elements. If safety features are implemented and it'll catch our eye and we'll go, we gotta do that in our community, right? And that's happening all the time because it's ever changing. The lo- local road safety plan, as far as how to collect input. One example is a local road safety plan, which we had workshops and had the public facing. Social pinpoint website, a project website where there's a map and people could point a dot, put a pin on the map and put a comment on it like. I observe speeding here or crossing. The street at this location is challenging. And so we have those memorialized in the appendix of that plan. Now, as you mentioned, it's. Year and a half old now, and so it's already getting dated, but during the preparation of that plan. It was eye opening all of the new features because of the that plan's approach was to look at all of the collision data. And and that focuses us on certain locations in the town. And then to use a collection of countermeasures, safety, you know, countermeasures from a long list. To applying those countermeasures to these specific locations to make those locations safer. So we have this. Plan with the appendix of of like five or six pages of people's comments. And we have a list of countermeasures in that. Report documented there, which is ever changing. I acknowledge that. And it it is an iterative, ongoing process.
That's called a safety plan. Is that what that is?
The local road safety plan. I remember filling that out and it's, yeah, it's on our the city's website and that's going to be our go to report. Every time we do a street preservation project to pull off countermeasures from there that are low cost. And effective. But the dialogue needs to continue through these workshops and through bringing. These street preservation projects before the planning commission and sharing. The the different safety aspects that we've managed to incorporate into those plans. And so so we have to keep the dialogue going and the interaction going through all as many means as we can, if it's Facebook. Yeah, social outreach, if these workshops, putting up ClearGov, we've got ClearGov sites that are on there, which is our public facing. And and people can can put comments and subscribe. To those projects.
So I mean, I really appreciate and I know it's stepping up the bar there, but there's this, there's. I know I've been involved in a number of those meetings as everybody will probably know, remember and stuff. But what's not visible is the summary of what comes out of them. So, you know, looking at the C I P. There isn't a way of referencing that those have been taken into account. And particularly I bring up. The the Highway one one six and the West Katati Avenue. That, I mean, as a basic plan, I understand it's going forward, but. We've had some history there where the input hasn't really appeared to bubble up and be visible. So I think specifically you said on that plan when you presented it at the local road safety and later on, you said, ignore what I'm actually showing you. Because it's going to go through a process. And, you know, I think that is very welcome that it's it's going through that. It's going to be a process and hopefully the safety, but the history has not been there in the past of having safety. Most of the money is going to be spent on the vehicular side. And that's just, you know, that's good. That's that. That's what it takes to do the engineering. But how do we connect it in with the pedestrian safety that we've on that northwest side, we've designated that seniors can live there. We can have children that live there. We have got people who are presenting with builders are presenting plans at the moment that haven't come to the committee. But how can we have this aspect that parents could direct their children to cross that and that design of that junction will be safe enough? To take it. Now, I've been to presentations in Petaluma, where they've they've the Petaluma Urban Chat, where they're presenting a lot of what it takes to do this and. Just from an engineering point of view, as a electronic engineer, I mean, we when I'm doing things, when we teach the S S U students to do things, it's to have the criteria there. That can input to the professionals to design it. And so really that aspect of that. Safety criteria hasn't been put forward in those design criteria that I can see of. And pedestrian and bicycle plan is out of date. It does have things that are in there, but they have been somewhat ignored in the past, or there hasn't been the ability to do that. So really, it's a question, how do we? For the input that the public has made, and when I talk to people, they're just fairly like. Well, we make this input and it doesn't go anywhere. And I, this is a new stab at it, so it's great. So it's just, how does that? Input become visible and you have got some of the plans out already or some of the sort of things there. So appreciate some of that, but it's still not at a. A granularity. I I know the terms in software that I want to talk about, but in terms of the like, the engineering for what you're doing, there isn't the granularity of what's visible. To the public. There's the deep engineering of the road base and the junction sizes, but saying that. This has to be designed for seniors to cross. That level is not in the current either the local road safety plan, which wasn't, which was a vehicle safety. Plan that came forward, not really a public safety. I mean, I don't want to be a statistic to inform the plan, so I'm kind of trying to put forward those ideas first. So I do really appreciate what's going on and I'm just trying to say, how do we get the transparency on it?
No message received. What you'll see are are more workshops. Coming your way. The the Highway one sixteen, West Katati Avenue intersection. Is is really close to having a public workshop. There's a public outreach. Component to that project where we will very aggressively reach out to the public and present. What the different options are. What's really encouraging is in that process. The these, the design inherently includes these elements now. It's it's kind of analogous to the stormwater L I D. Used to be all just. Get the water out of there and now we're going to slow the water down with the roadways. It's just get the traffic through there how it used to be. Now it's. No, it's slow the traffic down and make it more bike pad friendly. And so Caltrans actually. Has a lot, their their manual of standard devices. Control devices are including a lot of these elements and they they have to be included in these designs. So that's happening. And you will see, we will. We're incorporating more of an effort now in our process to get that. These designs, the granular granularity of these designs out to the public. And so it's not something that's just delivered. Done in a without any input. We're right at that point where that's happening.
Very much appreciate it, but like the L I D. That Valparaiso, one of them's failing. One of the stormwater ponds, their stormwater. Systems, I mean, it wasn't tested when it went in, so it's failing now. I mean, I pointed it out fourteen months ago and I think some action was taken on it. So I just, my concern is that as we move forward. We don't, we 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 get the visibility and that's. That the public input for safety purposes, you know, is. Is built into it because once it's done, it's done for thirty fifty years. And.
I I I think too. You mentioned that the bike pad master plan is getting a little dated. Well, that did not hinder. The local road safety plan at all. And then the next. Iteration of the bike safe bike and bed master plan is not going to be hindered by how antiquated the local road safety plan is going to become. It's. It's they keep leapfrogging each other. So Noah and I have already talked about all of the. New information that's in the local road safety plan that's going to be drawn in, brought into. The bike pad master plan and then it's going to take it and and move it forward even beyond that. So it's. I think we're all moving in the right direction and hopefully we'll we'll see those changes here.
Great. Well, that's fantastic. I mean, I appreciate some of the looking through the packet, the class one bike path maintenance on the west side. Take the east and the west side that's happening there. I appreciate the sidewalk gap closures as well, some of those. I mean, there's a lot of little detail. But when people are traveling, they're traveling from A to B. And so it's figuring out what's in that route that goes wrong. And then how do we connect? We are part of Sonoma County, we are part of Roanoke Park, and so it's connecting with one of those. On that, the Redwood Drive improvements, they sound great, but right at the northern end of that with the Roanoke Park. I'm not too sure anything, I think it's in the works where it's been identified before, but there's a narrow bridge there. And at the same time, so it's with the with the boundary with Roanoke Park. At the same time, there is a plan in Roanoke Park to do an overpass. So they've got an overpass that's going to come through and essentially land on the on the Roanoke Park side of that. But that northbound bicycle lane particularly. Is squeezed at the moment and that bridge. I I mean, I I don't know what it's going to take, but I think. There at least should be an item somewhere, probably because it's a long term for the pedestrian and bicycle plan, probably should go in the pedestrian and bicycle plan of. How is that supposed to work? And I I will not cycle up north on the Redwood. Drive. Side of things because it's just the way that it it finishes. So I'll come back along that path because it's actually quite nice. If I'm coming back from Sebastopol or places, you can take the class one bike path along the Laguna. And when there's an overpass, if I'm ever allowed alive while it happens, it's in the planning process, Roanoke Park's got it. I mean, I'd obviously go across into the. Ac- ac- across the Highway one oh one at that point, but right now I'll then cut down south. Through that, but going up north, it's, you know, got the concrete barrier on one side with one oh one. So I look forward to perhaps that being. Visible on the design. So um, I look forward to perhaps that being visible on the designs and but thank you. That's great. Thank you for, it's my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Hancock.
Uh, just a couple of questions. Uh, one, you mentioned workshops and being new on the planning commission. Are we notified when this workshops take place?
Yes, yes. Um, noticing for the workshops would be through social media, through our website. As, as many means as possible.
Okay. And then I'm kind of piggybacking on what Neil was talking about. I was noticing with all the road improvement projects, there doesn't seem to be, at least in the brief that we had, the focus on uh, public safety and traffic coming, because I, well, a lot of the comments towards the back of our packet from the public have to do with how fast people are driving on our roads. And nobody pays attention to stop signs. Nobody pays attentions to when there's like a no turn lane, people are turning anyway. Um, and it's just, and it's not just the Catati issue, it's everywhere, but it's just, and I don't know how do you, how you fix that. It's, you know, it's, you want to do public education, but people are going to do what people want to do. So I just, I don't know if there's other um, uh, ways that other communities have used to solve that besides narrowing down roadways and, and what have you. But um, it, that's something I think as time goes on, you're going to see people are, you know, like you said, they want to get from point A to point B as fast as possible. You know, we have, and we're encouraging more and more people to walk and, and um, ride their bikes and what have you. Uh, we have to keep that in mind too, because sometimes those bike lanes are kind of narrow and those people are flying down the road. I know there was an issue for a long time with the kids coming from Thomas Page School. There was a concern about, you know, we wanted to be walkable. At the same time, it being located where it is, it was a hard, hard problem to, to try to solve. Yeah, I think that's, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner Gilardi. I just had a couple of things I was curious about on the sewer work that was done out here on um, on West Sierra. Is this the first major street that we've done or have we been doing things on the sewers the last few years or?
This is, this is the first major.
Okay, so that's going to be coming on and going on. Okay. Um, then when you're talking about the water tanks, you mentioned the Cypress tank. It's, we were in a meeting maybe six or nine months ago, they were talking about a tank out west of town that wasn't being used. Is that the Cypress tank or is that a different tank or am I imagining things?
The Cypress tank is off a water road here. So on the east side of town,
Okay.
Um, we have a one million gallon tank on the west side off of West Sierra. And that's, that's our, our one and only tank.
So there's not a tank that needs rehab that's sitting around that needs to be restored or anything?
No, you, the Sonoma Water has dozens of tanks.
Okay.
They've got a very, uh, they're, they have a program to recode theirs, but those aren't, are not our tanks.
And when you're talking about gateway signage, is that all for the gateway down here at um, one sixteen and Old Redwood Highway? Or is it signage at various points around the city?
For all, all of the entrance points to the city.
Okay, okay. All right. Um, do we have any public comments from online, Kevin?
Thank you, Chair Savage. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Got a couple of hands up. First one is going to be Lori. You have the floor.
Hi, um, I had a few questions. Um, uh, when I did some research on the City Hall in nineteen seventy-one, it was sold to the city because it couldn't be a school anymore because under law, because it was not earthquake safe. Um, and so I'm wondering if there has been any, um, or if there has been any um, talk about earthquake um, upgrades to that retrofit to the city, City Hall and also um, or if there's been any um, um, talks of replacing City Hall eventually. And also the community center because um, I, I know the community center is at least um, fifty years old because my brother went there at Catati School. So thank you.
And the uh, next public comment, the Zoom name says Jay Needham. You have the floor.
Hi, my name is Jessica. Um, this is my first meeting, so please bear with me if I break any rules, just correct me. Um, I just have a couple of questions and I don't know the difference between action items or uh, non-action items, but I know we're talking about the Cypress tank at the top of Nelson and Cypress. And I see that it says fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So I was just curious if I can ask questions about that. Um, I'd like to know if that's when the intended uh, finish date is, or if that's when it's going to be started. Um, I know that there has been some tree removals that I don't see on, um, I know Mr. Scott has talked about the ClearGov transparency page. I do not see that listed on the ClearGov page, so I was wondering where we're supposed to find information about that. Um, I have been affected by that and I'm curious to get some information. I did see that there's also pipelines for the Cypress tank. And a while back, when I first started asking questions that I have not yet received answers to, Mr. Obit had sent me a map, which did indicate that there may be some more land intended to be purchased for that tank. Um, does not seem that that has happened yet, so maybe that's going to be in the CIP when it becomes closer to that timeframe. Um, but I just wanted to know if there was any way that I could ask questions and get some answers on those types of projects. That's all.
And Chair Savage, that will end the public comment.
Okay, um, do you have any clarification on, on the City Hall question and retrofit of?
Sure, the, the city staff has no record of um, or awareness of um, this building or this community center being seismically unfit.
And then on the Cypress um, Avenue water tanks and the pipelines.
We're not sufficiently close to the design of those projects yet to answer specific questions. The, the timing is um, over, over a couple of year period fiscal year twenty-seven and twenty-eight, so that's uh, starts January first, twenty-twenty-six, we would start design of that project. And once that hap- happens, we would have a better idea of um, exactly where that pipeline's going to go. How large the tank's going to be. I would, I would point that the information that we do have about those projects are in the city's water master plan, which is available from the city's website. So I would encourage folks to go there and um, look at that source.
All right. Thank you. Um, do we have any other discussion from the council regarding the resolution before us?
No. I, I think it's great that it's come out and discussed. There is a lot of movement in um, for safety issues. Just to reference that where I've been focusing, there is a lot of um, action or a lot of also influence going on in Petaluma. And there's a group there with their um, their general plan upgrade called Petaluma Urban Chat. Also Santa Rosa has commissioned a very special and outside group to audit the roads and the safety features so that, to try and bring in the safety into the plan. So, so that is there. And I believe, having received in the mail this week, last weekend, that there is a lot of um, federal focus on safety. Um, safety funding. I mean, you walked through the, I guess, the late, the last year's um, infrastructure upgrade and that's positioned for the next, I don't know how many years. I, I hope staff are looking at some of that for, you know, we have a lot of funding that's, seems like it's potential for these projects. And particularly road projects can be very expensive, you know, if, if um, not specifically in Catati, but up in Santa Rosa, there's a lot of projects there, but how we connect and how, there's a couple of possible bridges as well that would be within the Catati sphere of influence or with Sonoma County. And I don't know whether that fits in there. So, so I really appreciate the plan that's come forward and I certainly, while I, I have some quibbles with five percent of it. I'm not sure that I can say, no, it doesn't meet the general plan based on that. I was really trying hard. Can I actually say, you know, have we got some area in here? We're really not meeting the general plan, but um, I, I do appreciate that we're doing the bicycle and pedestrian plan and I do want to ask for some schedule updates later on since it's my last chance, but I would support moving forward.
Okay. Comments, Mr. Gilardi?
No, the only thing I'm curious about is I used to see in resolution numbers. Is there a resolution number for this? It's not stated on the one that we have.
So the practice of the commission is typically to assign the resolution number after the vote.
Okay.
Uh, in case it was uh, continued or formally denied, um, we assign it afterwards, so that way it uh, lives in the record uh, in uh, order of adoption.
All right, thank you.
One, one other further question, and it's on this, that was brought up also by the speaker. On the, on the thing of action items versus recording what's going on in the meeting. I mean, clearly we're going to come out with an action item here. But on a previous planning commission meeting, there was discussion had at the planning commission that then didn't go to the council. So how do, again, I brought up this question last time here, how does some of the discussion we've had here get captured for the city council?
So uh, on items that are formally um, required to be uh, brought before the commission in order to obtain a recommendation to the city council, such as the CIP for general planning conformity. Typically staff would include a brief summary of the commission discussion in the staff report that's presented to the city council. And then also we're um, you know, keeping these thoughts and, and direction in mind as we move forward with other projects uh, to ensure that we are implementing them or at least pointing them out as we present to the city council, who they're the ultimate authority in approving the, the final designs or providing policy and, and specific direction to staff as to how we implement their, their direction and, and goals for the city.
Right. And since we're advisory, I think that's important to do that valuable, valuable to do it.
Thank you. So do we have a motion on the resolution at hand?
I'll move, we approve the rev- resolution of the planning commission of the city of Catati, finding the proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four annual and multi-year capital improvements in conformity with the Catat- city of Catati general plan.
All right, second.
I'll second it.
All right, maybe we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gilardi?
Yes.
Chair Savage?
Yes. Moving on to the next matter at hand, we have a uh, staff report on the twenty-twenty-two housing annual production.
Thank you, Chair Savage. And uh, planning technician Pratik Thapa is going to present this item.
All right, um, good evening commissioners and everyone in the room. My name is Pratik Thapa. I'm a planning technician here at City of Catati. Um, and today I'll be presenting the annual progress report for the year twenty-twenty-two required by California Department of Housing and Community Development. So today, um, I'll just go briefly over the background of this um, APR as we call it. So this, this is a requirement uh, in the general plan. Uh, the housing elements, and this would be for the, the current of the cycle of twenty-fourteen up until twenty-twenty-two, the December. And this has been required since nineteen eighty. And the cities, all cities in California are required to submit the APR to Department of Housing, Community Development annually. So the uh, it demonstrates the progress toward meeting the original housing needs assessment in short arena numbers uh, which is uh, recommended or uh, bigger art by the Aback and MTC, as you can find in the uh, Excel sheet in table B. Uh, and then it summarizes the progress toward the housing element goals, which is in table D of the uh, Excel sheet, which Director Noel will talk about a little bit. And finally, we also have a new requirement in this uh, addition, which is the surplus land mentioned in table H of the uh, so sheet. So this table basically summarizes the allocation provided by the arena and what the city has achieved so far. One more time. So the arena, uh, according to the arena allocation, we have about twenty-two remaining uh, based on all income levels, twenty-two units remaining. And up until now, end of last year, December uh, twenty-twenty-two, we have achieved one hundred and forty-three toll units uh, during the cycle from twenty-fifteen. And this one I will pass over to Director Noel to talk about.
Yes, just uh, as the commission is aware of and the community, you know, the, the state continues to pass significant amounts of legislation regarding housing law. Kind of starting in two thousand seventeen and really just kind of gaining momentum over the last, I would say, five years or so. Um, there's been just significant changes in how land use, uh, local land use laws apply to housing developments. Um, ADUs are the one that most people are uh, very aware of, because those laws first really changed in two thousand seventeen, very early. Uh, accessory dwelling units or granny units, people call them, second units. And essentially the state uh, in its efforts to try to streamline the construction of more housing uh, sought to make uh, accessory dwelling units by right. And so previously, many cities would require a use permit approval from the planning commission. They would require separate sewer and water connections, fire sprinklers and installation. And so the state really sought to support the development of ADUs by eliminating all of those local requirements and a, and a lot requiring cities to simply issue a building permit for the construction of an ADU. They've added um, additional definitions of junior ADUs, uh, and they continue to make changes to allow uh, local property owners to construct those types of units on their properties. Uh, similarly, uh, the density bonus law, which has existed uh, for decades in California, uh, continues to be amended in ways to allow more density to be put on certain parcels uh, and with certain specific types of projects, primarily those that are providing additional uh, numbers of affordable housing units. And so just to point out some of these trends, um, as we're wrapping up this cycle, which is, has ended in twenty-twenty-two. Um, and we were moving into the new cycle, which uh, our consultant Luke Lindenbusch will be presenting in the next item. Uh, a recommendation for adoption of the six-cycle housing element, which will affect the city's essentially housing production from twenty-twenty-three through twenty-thirty. Um, by right, housing is a similar trend that we've seen where the state has made more types of housing projects uh, qualified directly for um, by right approvals, meaning ministerial processes. So many projects who previously would come before the commission or even the city council for uh, ultimate approval at a public hearing with a notification. That trend is, is really been pushing away for certain types of projects, mainly those that provide a significant amount of affordable housing to be able to take uh, a, a different path and go straight to building permits. When these laws were first starting to pass, we brought discussions, um, there was a workshop in this chamber in October of two thousand nineteen uh, where we, we talked about how these changes were going to be very um, different from the public and the decision makers' experience historically for how development would get approved. And we had discussions of, you know, is it worth bringing, bringing a uh, a project before the commission where the commission has no authority over it and the public can't influence at all? Is, is that a worthy process to undertake? And, and the decision was made at that time that we likely should not present these meetings in the same format as, as typical entitlement projects. But we should still make significant efforts to notify the public and let the community understand these projects. Try to educate them on the laws that are allowing them to proceed. And so just know that as these laws have, have um, taken place, uh, developers are starting to put together projects to implement them. We will start to see projects that are, are looking to under uh, take the processes that are allowed under these new regulations. uh take the processes that are allowed under these new regis- uh legislation. And then lastly, um, the la- most common other trend that we're seeing is parking reductions. And so typically, you know, the city requires two parking spaces for every type of unit that gets built in Katari. Um, the legislature has actually taken away the right of the city to apply that standard. They've directed us to graduate the parking requirement so that a studio apartment should not have the same parking criteria as a five-bedroom house, which a lot of folks uh understand makes sense, but in some instances, these parking reductions actually mandate or limit the amount of parking that can be required on a private development. So just, we just wanted to highlight this because um it is relatively new, and while this law, these laws have been in place for many years. We're just now really starting to see development projects take advantage of those. And so the community should just understand that that um the process by which development has historically been approved is is kind of, it's a whole new ballgame for uh developers and the public and the decision makers in how we're doing our jobs and how we're uh being made aware of these projects. So we just wanted to highlight these trends because we do uh feel that they're going to continue even and they've been there's been significant amount of law since about two thousand seventeen uh that's kind of trended in this direction. And ultimately, um, we're starting to see some projects take advantage of it.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Okay, so I just, I'm just gonna present the report summary, as you can see in the spreadsheet, which you've been prior of it. So this report was divided in three different categories uh in terms of reporting the units. Uh, the first one is uh based on building permit applications. And then we have entitlements and certificate of occupancy. So in the year twenty twenty-two, the city received seven accessory dwelling units building applications, out of which three of them have been final or been given certificate of occupancy to. We also uh given out sort of like was it eighteen units granted occupancy in twenty twenty-two. Those are Kissing Ranch and Jamie Lane or Ryan Lane. Out of the seven ADUs applications, three of them were final, were given the certificate of occupancy. And we also conducted a survey by calling the applications uh applicants and voluntarily asking for their information if they're willing to give out. And we discovered that two of them are considered to be very low income, one moderate income. So that's three of them. And also the element which was added for this APR reporting, the surplus land uh which is just for sale at Katari Smart TOD, as in transit-oriented development site. Then we also have housing programs, which um talks about in table. I think I can kind of touch upon that. Table. It's the the summary of housing element uh implementation in table D. Yeah, so this one basically just summarizes the ongoing projects, the programs or any forecast uh from the housing element, which has been kind of summarized in that table as well. And this is just recommendation to the planning commission to review the details provided, identify any concerns and or any direction to staff. Uh, this is due on April first. Uh, this will be all but also supposed to be presented to city council on March twenty-eighth. And we just want to get any feedback from you uh before turning it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have uh questions or comments from commissioners?
Um, thank you. So when did the state declare a housing crisis? Do you remember?
I actually do not have the specific date. I would imagine it was as early as two thousand seventeen, but it could have been as late as two thousand nineteen. Sometime in that era, and it could have even been slightly before that. I'd have to look specifically.
And so is there any prediction on when this that might be withdrawn or are we still in that?
Yeah, I've heard nothing about um withdrawing that. All all I'm hearing is that, you know, there's very large numbers of homes that are needed to be constructed according to the state in order to satisfy the current demand and that our trend is nowhere near that uh target.
So I, you know, I I having been through the process and also I guess that was Katari's two thousand and fifteen element, and I guess this is now the update, you know, I mean, it it just seems to me that we had a lot of I I invoke chaos theory that we we had a lot of complexity in what we're doing, we and all the cities of Katari. So I appreciate that we're going through this and and in a sense, though it's sort of seems harsh. Um, it's reducing the complexity for other people, builders to actually use. I I mean, what what in terms of the the discussion on parking allocations? I mean, I think we've over allocated in the past and that can now be to our benefit, but there are hotspots. So is there any way that we could um? Is there any value maybe to identify where there is is a higher density of of vehicular access that might need some special, not vehicular access, vehicle parking? I mean, most people tend to outsource that. They don't think of it as part of the the living conditions or where they're they're living. But is there any way that that can be identified? Is there any value to identifying that?
Yeah, I think uh that's a great point, uh and I think there is value actually on both sides of it. So the state law that has uh limited the city's ability to require parking in certain instances does have some kind of relief valves that if there are identified uh health and safety impacts associated with parking, then uh some of the mandates can be um kind of superseded by those health and safety impacts. So so on the the one kind of extreme side where the state has said you're limited in how much parking you can require, there is kind of a asterisk that says except in certain instances. Uh, but I think on the on the other side of that is, you know, uh, the development of housing has always, or traditionally, I should say, especially in non-urban settings, been coupled with the development of parking. Uh, and in general, any land use has always had a parking kind of a component that's required. And some communities are starting to see that that may not be necessary. Uh, and they're starting to allow a kind of an uncoupling of the residential units and the parking requirements or the commercial square footage and the parking requirements that go to it. Or one thing that the city of Katari already does is allow you to kind of double count parking in mixed-use areas that can kind of serve the um residents, you know, at nighttime when they're home or in the evening after they get home from work. But then that same space, when those folks leave to go to work, can satisfy the need for the um commercial component in a mixed-use development. So there is some flexibility on both sides of uh the parking mandates. But there are specific limitations on what the city can do trending in the recent legislation.
So so maybe the, in a in a sense, the there is some anxiety about that. I mean, talking to people, um, talking to other sorts of things, but there are certain areas that do have an abundance of spaces. And I think also we look at um safety issues. There's sometimes a benefit to having more parking on streets. When it's done right, because that makes everybody cautious or more cautious. But it has to be done right because you can't have a fast street and potentially somebody running out behind a vehicle. Um, so the sightlines have to be there. So it makes it more complicated. But I I think there's, you know, the density, the dense certainly around what I've seen in some of the new developments. Velpa ISO, for instance, the the wide open roads that are in there. I mean, that's a prime area if anybody wanted to do ADUs, it seems to me. I mean, we can't control it, I don't think, to that degree. But it certainly just trying to phrase that there is, where is the value, where is the extra parking around that people may not need to be concerned? But whereas there also perhaps for people moving in to say, hey, this is a high-density parking area. And um, you know, you may not find it very easily, but we we did discuss it at the at the the land use committee, that it's very difficult to really m- manage it from a point of view of parking permits. So it seems to me it's going to be flexible.
Yeah, I I think that what's going to happen is is once these projects get built, then those issues are going to come to a surface because I think you can't predict who's going to be moving into them. And some of them are going to have one car, no car, some of them have multiple cars. And I think that's, you know, when the mix of people get in there, that's when you're going to start seeing some of these things bubble to the surface. That's that's what bothers me about the whole mandate with with the from the coming down from the state because they're not going to have to deal with that. And people will be coming here or coming to the the city council and complaining, how can you approve this when there's not enough parking for people? You know, it's it's, but I think again, it's educating the public about these projects that are going to be coming to us that, you know, we would like to have some input on, but we're not going to be able to have input on, you know, and the public has to understand that, you know, in some of these circumstances, our hands are going to be tied.
So is there a way on that of identifying where there's areas of, we have a zoning map, and I'm, I guess this is just going to get too complicated, but areas of lower-density parking, which would absorb them a lot better for people who are concerned. Because when people are concerned, they tend to not really have anything, they don't have the data to base it on. So um.
Well, I mean, we could identify those areas and it would almost be a recommendation to a developer that parking ratios be X. We couldn't enforce them, you know, but um that, I mean, that would be in an advisory type of capacity, I guess.
But I think with a developer also, if if there was very limited parking, that could have a negative impact on them either renting out units or selling units because they're going to be narrowing down their field of people that are going to want to live in those situations.
Well, certainly making it visible for anybody who might ask the question is is valuable, I think, for that, somebody who expects to have easy um historical parking and and things. So that would be one benefit of making it visible. Um, but I think there's a benefit also in trying to figure out what are the areas that are low parking. And also, I know this discussion came up with one of the at the city council, are there certain new building zones where we really should be saying no closed-door garages? And that wasn't, that wasn't something that has come up in the formula-based designs or any of the latest designs. Um, but the city council took it up and I thought that was a very good idea. So.
On these projects that that would basically get over the counter approval, are there requirements for um EV charging stations on these limited parking?
So there are, the state has really um ramped up its amount of EV charging required under the building code. And then the city of Katari has adopted tier-one Cal Green, so one step above the state minimums. And one thing we just heard today is the state is recognizing how fast uh uh folks are transitioning to EV purchasing, and they are actually considering a mid-cycle building code update specifically for EV charging. And so that's, I don't want to say unprecedented, but it is a very uncommon thing to do. But I think it just shows the state's recognition of how fast uh EV um technology is being adopted by average consumers.
But but in that, we haven't actually adopted anything for multifamily housing, have we currently in the last?
Not beyond the current tier-one standards uh of the building code. So the building code was updated uh and went into effect with the newest cycle, uh January first of this year. So we have fairly contemporary electric vehicle charging standards, and then we're even Cal Green tier-one, so a little bit higher. The council has directed uh community development to bring back a uh discussion of potential um changes to the energy code, which could include, you know, fossil fuel, uh natural gas elimination, but also enhanced electric vehicle charging, and that will be presented in this fiscal year. So prior to July, we expect to get an ordinance in place. Uh, and that will come to before the planning commission. Um, right now, one of the struggles has been actually for our department. Just getting clarity around what the building code actually requires because there's so many caveats. Uh, there's so many different development types that are anticipated in the building code from single-family, you know, detached, attached to uh high-rise condominiums to high-rise apartments, low-rise apartments. So we're trying to get all that information in a digestible format that can be presented to the community and the council and the planning commission. And then uh an informed discussion can be had about, okay, where and how should we seek to go beyond those standards? Uh, and then again, today in our research, we're just being informed that the state is likely to push a mid-cycle update. So we want to be informed on what uh that will include so we can kind of capture some of those uh economies of scale with our efforts.
So the the, if I understand that the current cycle that we haven't adopted this year for EVs is is that there'd be ten percent of spaces would be EV available or EV charging, but then twenty-five percent would have to be EV-ready. And we're going to need to understand the difference between what is the conduits that have to be put in? And then what's the equipment that has to support it? So essentially, there's an extra cost for multifamily in having to plan ahead for, if you if you like, twenty thirty-five, we have to plan ahead to hundred percent EV availability. And how does, how does all that conduit, how does all that backend stuff? Um, and there's some experience, I think, with Frog Song Cohousing where they've done it, but it can be expense, an extra very expensive if you don't do it later on and quite expensive or a little little extra cost in the early stages. So we haven't even talked about that with the multifamily, have we?
Uh, there are multifamily EV charging standards, and I think the standards that you're referencing are actually adopted in the twenty twenty-three code. But right now, we're still in the information gathering because we, when we presented the code, we did not have a clear picture of exactly what the EV charging standards are uh that are actually even in place right now in Katari. So that's where we're at right now. It's it's um, we're information gathering, but that, we're anticipating having a um workshop to present that within the next six weeks.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any public comments um online?
Thank you, Chair Savage. Speaking to our Zoom. The comment, please use the raise hand icon. Lori, you have the floor.
Um, I keep hearing about you guys needing to educate us public. Um, we all know the these these SB thirty-five, we know builder's remedy, we know all this. I am the author right now of a post on Nextdoor that has eleven thousand views and two hundred comments about this whole subject. And because the downtown Katari could possibly have a five-story um SB thirty-five, and it was buried in the website. Um, and it also, it was put in the um newsletter for the water bill. But you're not engaging also people effectively at all. You're not going to Facebook and saying, oh, this is happening now. We hear about it. It shouldn't have to be wait till two weeks before it's built before we hear about it. Um, and that's all, we all understand this city doesn't have control at points. And we don't, we don't need, I, the song key I keep thinking is we don't need no education, education. Because that's not what's needed here. You need participation. You need to engage and treat people well to get them into those council chambers so that we can have not so much discord in the city over housing. It, anyway, that's my um comment. Thank you.
Chair Savage, that will end public comment.
All right, thank you. Uh, any other discussion from council or questions?
Could could I just make a statement? I'd like to thank Ms. Alderman for promoting that discussion. I mean, it just can't happen within the city. It does need to have a discussion elsewhere. I think one of the previous meetings, though, that happened here with the zoning and you identified this project. I think city manager um Damien O'Bid actually said, as that project stands, even though the city has submitted it, doesn't seem like it meets its criteria. So even though uh it seems like it's possibly a negotiating tactic by some, um, that's my take on it. I'll just admit that as my personal side. So I just like to, I've spoken to a couple of people um who have asked me questions about that project, and it very much seems like a developer has put something forward. It doesn't necessarily meet all the criteria as from what city manager O'Bid said in our meeting a couple of weeks ago. So anyway, thank you for Ms. Alderman for promoting that discussion.
Yeah, Chair Savage, I, I'd like an opportunity to respond to Ms. Alderman. Just, uh, I, I understand the concern. Um, my job as the community development director is to balance providing information to the community uh, in a timely manner, but also not uh, providing uh, kind of misinformation to folks or providing it at a bad time. And so I chose the newsletter as a means to inform every, every community member who gets a uh, utility bill in this community as an opportunity to find out about this project. We put all the plans uh, that had beneficial information from our standpoint on the city's website with a link that we provided in that article. So that way anyone who is interested could find out about it. I absolutely appreciate Ms. Alderman uh, helping the city to uh, inform the community of the potential for this project. It's important to note, in order to move to an SB thirty-five process, which would require the city to make a decision in sixty days. Um, it has to qualify under one AB one sixty-eight, which is a requirement that we engage with local tribal representatives. Uh, and we're in that conversation right now. So until the project can move out of tribal consultation, it hasn't even been deemed to qualify for SB thirty-five. Uh, once it's deemed to qualify, then the developer could submit their final design, then staff would review it. We make a determination whether it's consistent with SB thirty-five and the city's objective design standards. If it's not, the developer would have to modify that project, resubmit it. Uh, and then if ultimately it did gain approval under uh, SB thirty-five, then they would proceed to building permits. Uh, and all the requirements for life safety elements that would be reviewed under the California Building Code, including some of the EV charging standards that we just discussed. So at this point, while it's very important for the community to be aware of the project, there is absolutely no decision pending. Um, we're definitely letting folks know uh, before there's any imminent construction of the project's availability. And I'm happy to chat with anyone who's interested in finding out more about the project. And I've had multiple conversations with folks as they become aware of it. So just, just want the community to understand that uh, we're doing our best to let everyone know about this, these things. But we also don't want to raise a panic for something before it's even uh, kind of come to anywhere near fruition.
Right. Thank you, Noah.
Chair Savage, there was one hand that has come up.
Okay.
Uh, I believe the name was Jessica. You have the floor.
Yes. Hi, thank you. I just um, wanted to kind of piggyback on Ms. Alderman's comment about the public not getting information. And then hearing the gentleman speaking stating that he is actually the one that does outreach. So that when there is a project that is ongoing, the public has that information. Um, as I had stated earlier about the Cypress tanks, the tree removals, I was not notified. Um, so I just wanted to see if I could collect his information and maybe just see what information was put out to the public about that project. So if I could get his name and title, I'd love to be able to contact him uh, separately.
So my name is Noah Housh. I'm Community Development Director for the city and my email is N H O U S H at kattati city dot O R G. It is worth noting uh, tree removal projects that are brought by, by a private citizen go through a tree removal process managed by my department. Uh, however, if it's an emergency removal, then that process is, is different than it would be if it's a non-emergency. And then tree removal projects that are associated with public works, which means development on um, like of, of public infrastructure projects also go through a different process, which I believe that was the Cypress tank project. Uh, or the trees that were removed in that vicinity, I believe they were those, but I'm happy to find out more details uh, if the caller wants to give me an email.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners?
Yeah, I just want to say that from my past experience, more education is better than less. Um, because people have incredibly busy lives. And the only time I heard any feedback from people was what they read in the, in the water bill. So I think, you know, there's certain people that pick up different pieces of information in different ways. Um, I was first aware of what was going on with this type of approval process. Um, reading in the newspaper about what's happening in Padluma. So I think more, more information is, is definitely better. Um, but you know, I, I totally agree that, you know, people in the community are going to look at, why did you do this? How did you approve it? Because there's, there is a segment of the community that sadly is always going to be disconnected.
Thank you. Thank you. I, I'd just like to echo that. I think that probably it's, it's a wordsmithing thing of public education. Right. That's exactly what I didn't want to say. It's, it's the public um, is making the information available. Um, and it becomes part of the process of, of hearing what's, what that is that's difficult at times. So it's knowing where to go for some of those um, informational elements. And I, I think that's where it's very useful so to know the process, which is changing, I think, in the city. So I wonder if you could also identify if there are projects coming along. Um, how do people, how does one find out about them? Or how do you, we, we used to be on Facebook where all our friends send us stuff. But I think there's also email lists where you can remain up to date. Um, and it is, it is just a moving story. And there are just also to reflect, there's an awful lot of people out there in terms of people who could benefit from housing. Um, and there's a somewhat of, you know, there is a crisis going on with that. And it's just, it's very hard to, you know, help support that. So I think that's also part of what is essential, what I find essential. And we had a six-person house that um, Sonoma County bought on our street and it's been wonderful. I mean, it's been fine. I wouldn't say it's wonderful, but it's, it's been fine. There's been no problems at all with it. So how to actually know that there is um, you know, changes happening? And that there are ways of, of finding out about it by subscribing on email lists or the ones that are out there, I think Facebook now the city's doing. So I wonder if you could just go through Noah on what are those various options? Um, that where you can get that, not that education, but you can at least be on this. You can get the same level of, of updates, maybe updates.
Community awareness.
Community, well, awareness, awareness of what's going on. You know, it's part of it is figuring out how do you feel that you're a partner in it or at least know a little about what's going on. I mean, we all are on a bit of a roller coaster on this, including, you know, all the people who are unhoused or um, you know, and it's not just California that's got this problem. It's got all sorts of ramifications in different places. So um, anyway, I just on our local issue, Kattati, um, perhaps.
Yeah, just the housing issue, just like the ho- homeless issue, it didn't happen overnight. It slowly happened over a number of years and a lot of people want us to do that magic wand and solve it right now. And unfortunately, it's a huge problem and it's going to take some time, but you have to make those steps forward.
And there's some things we're not discussing either. So we're not discussing the job creation or the amount of offices. I mean, that should be a regional discussion for the Bay Area, just what is the job creation? But that's, that's a taboo subject from what I've heard, talking to some people who are involved in it, you know, it's just going to another level. But right now, we're for the Bay Area trying to figure out how do we, or the state is trying to figure out how to actually have better housing. And we've had all these, these fires and other things. So anyway, just to come back to that, Kattati. How do people uh, sort of remain updated?
Yeah. And so we, I think to Commissioner Gilardi's point, we've been really trying to broaden our, our the net that we cast to inform folks uh, of, of development projects. So we just codified, the city council approved and planning commission supported a direct mailing requirements for certain projects. So anyone within five hundred feet of a project will get a notice. Um, we codified onsite public hearing signs. So projects that do require uh, public hearings that are over a certain size are required to put a sign on the, on the site. Um, the city has done that historically, but it was never a requirement. We put specific requirements as to when and how that gets done to try to broaden folks who are beyond the five hundred feet, but maybe drive by that site every day or walk by it or see it. Um, if you're interested in housing issues specifically, the city has a housing interest list that's available on the community development webpage under the housing page. You could uh, just provide your email. We don't do anything other than send you emails about housing uh, related topics. And we really don't spam you, I promise. We'll only send you uh, when it's an important topic to um, touch on. Uh, and then we do use social media. And so as with this project, the SB thirty-five project that's proposed, uh, potentially going to uh, be proposed before downtown, if it does proceed outside the SB or I'm sorry, AB one sixty-eight process. Um, we would start to use those other tools that are available. So the newsletter was the first step and putting the information on the projects in progress uh, website, which the city also uses to put projects that have been submitted. Um, the plans and all the contact information for staff and the applicants are located on that website. So I, I think to the point is we've, we've been trying to broaden our means of outreach because we know multiple people or different types of people get uh, access from different types of uh, inform, information pathways. Um, and basically with the newsletter on the SB thirty-five project specifically, that was just the first step. And because it's so far from actually moving towards that process, we haven't escalated beyond that first step, but we definitely have plans to do so.
It might be nice in the utility newsletter, if we don't already, to just have a little blurb, how to stay connected. And some of those sites that you just listed, maybe just have that on there permanently. So when people do get an interest over one thing and they have those resources listed there. Any other comments this time?
Does anybody from the public want to make the comment on this or?
You're ready for our next topic, I believe. Um, we don't have resolution correct on this. This isn't information. Okay. All right. Are we uh, ready to wrap this one up then? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. We will move on to uh, item three and the sixth cycle housing element update.
Thank you, Chair Savage. So I'm welcoming uh, Luke Lindenbusch of Fourleaf. He is a housing consultant. Um, it's worth noting, we have been uh, working on this project for over a year. Luke was out with me at multiple public engagement meetings. We were at the farmer's market. We were at Kattati Coffee, at uh, Kattati Coffee downtown. We held a workshop here in the Kattati room, um, done multiple surveys. Uh, we really had, have really tried to engage the community and keep folks aware of this effort. And this is the beginning of the culmination of that effort. Uh, we submitted to, uh, we, we took over a year to analyze the housing challenges facing our community and our residents. We drafted a response to those. Um, there's multiple programs in this element to uh, address those identified needs. In addition to uh, trying to meet the state's mandate to the city on how many housing units they expect Kattati to need to build over the next eight years. Um, we engaged with stakeholders and community uh, service providers to get input on their experiences with housing and, and the, the needs of their clients and constituents. Um, and tonight we are, uh, we actually, we submitted this to the state and got some feedback from them. Luke will be providing a, a summary of our entire presentation kind of process. And then going into some of the specifics on what is in the housing element itself. The city does this once every eight years and it guides our decision-making for housing for the next eight-year cycle. And so uh, with that, I will turn it over to Luke and let him uh, take it away.
Thank you very much for that introduction, Noah, and good evening, uh, commission members of the public. My name is Luke Lindenbusch. I'm Housing Policy Planner with Fourleaf. And for the last almost year and a half, I've been the project manager for Kattati's uh, six-cycle housing element update covering the years twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one. Um, so really excited to be at this culmination point. And as Noah said, this is, you know, really the blueprint for the next eight years of what the city is looking to accomplish in terms of uh, reaching its housing goals. Uh, so moving right into the presentation, uh, going to first go over a background of, you know, sort of where we've been, uh, give a timeline. Uh, and then provide a, a little bit of uh, update on, you know, where things have changed since the last time we came to the commission in June on the housing strategy and on the site's inventory. And then at the end, going into the next steps, uh, going from adoption of this housing element to certification by the state. Uh, so just to go into a little bit of a timeline, uh, we really kicked off this project in uh, winter of twenty twenty-one uh, with a kickoff meeting, uh, doing a lot of the background research, uh, really beginning to engage the community. And then from there, uh, we had a series of presentations over the early half of twenty twenty-two, looking at preliminary input from both the commission and council on strategies. Uh, that informed uh, what was eventually the draft housing strategy and the preliminary sites inventory in June. Uh, that was a really big time when we engaged the public, which we'd been doing all throughout the process. Um, but we had a series of standalone community events in June, uh, that were really meant to engage different members of the community, including direct mailers to um, senior housing communities and mobile home communities, uh, in addition to tabling uh, at a bunch of different uh, community events that had occurred, including the Halloween carnival and others. Um, so that was uh, really when uh, the, the document that's in front of you, the couple hundred pages, uh, really started to take shape. And when we got some of the key feedback that, from the commission and council saying, yes, we want to move forward on some of these policies. We're not so excited about these ones or these sites. Uh, so that really shaped uh, sort of the preliminary look of what you're seeing today. Uh, in October, uh, we shaped up and, and put out for at least for thirty days of public review, the draft housing element itself. Uh, and then from there, there was a, an extended period where it, there's a new statutory requirement that it has to go to HCD for ninety days. It used to be shorter than that. Um, so that was really what took us into the beginning of this year. When in February, we received comments on the draft housing element that was submitted to HCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development. Uh, we received feedback uh, seven days before, uh, we received our letter back from HCD. And there's a statutory requirement that you can make revisions and release it for seven days and then resubmit it to the state, which we took advantage of doing to be able to take care of some of those low-hanging fruit that we uh, got feedback on from HCD. Um, so those were really the first, that was the first round of non-substantive changes from what came out of the public review draft. And then we got that letter back from HCD on February sixteenth uh, with a pretty extensive comments, uh, but not the most extensive comments, don't worry. Um, and really what this adoption draft is, is incorporating all of those statutory requirements that have been brought forward by HCD uh, to create the document that's in front of you. Moving forward. Uh, so really just to go into the sections of the housing element itself, um, there's four main sections. The first one is the introduction and summary. Uh, this looks at some of the information that was compiled from the ABAH housing data needs workbook, which looks at a lot of the census data, American community survey uh, data that really forms the basis of the analysis that needs to be done in the housing element process. So that's section one, in addition to providing community profile, uh, you know, a narrative of, of what the, the housing need in Kattati is. Uh, the second section is the draft, or not, not the draft housing strategy, the housing strategy itself, uh, which really comprises the goals, policies and programs. Uh, this is one area where it's important to note that this is a housing element update. Uh, we were not starting from scratch. And what we really were noting here was a lot of the success and some of uh, the failures of prior programs as well. Uh, those are accounted for in, in the um, implementation progress of, of the programs represented in the document. Uh, but really most of the programs were continued over from this fifth cycle housing element. And many of them were also amended to address state law and feedback from the community, among other reasons. So that's section two, the housing strategy, goals, policies, programs. Uh, section three is the housing sites. Uh, this is where the city has to accommodate its arena, uh, which we'll get into more later on in this presentation as well. And conclusion, um, and then the technical background report is really hefty document. Uh, this is not the front document that goes as part, that is, becomes a chapter of your general plan. Uh, but this is really everything that HCD is requiring, uh, and, and the technical research that goes into this report. Um, so that has four main sections. Those are the housing needs, uh, really looking at what are the needs of the community uh, in terms of providing housing for its community. Uh, what are the resources, uh, local, state, federal, county resources? How can it respond to that need? Uh, what is available for the city to be able to respond to the need? Uh, and then the third, the third section being constraints, uh, how is housing developed and constrained? And that's through an analysis of governmental constraints and non-governmental constraints. Uh, governmental constraints are, you know, processing fees, timelines, permitting timelines, community opposition. So things that ultimately uh, the government, our local government has at least some control over. And non-governmental constraints are just what they sound like. Everything that's non-governmental, the physical constraints, fires, floods, earthquakes, uh, things along those, those lines. Uh, so then from there, you have the appendices and supporting materials. Um, this provides a detailed uh, outline of all of the community feedback that was conducted over the course of uh, the housing element process over the last year and a half, including every public comment that was submitted, whether as part of the community survey or direct comments during uh, any point in the process. But most of our direct um, letters came during the public review draft or when the revised draft or adoption draft came out. Um, so that community engagement part of it comprises two appendices. There's also the sites inventory itself that provides the details of every given site. And then appended to that is the ABAH data needs work, uh, data, um, housing data needs workbook uh, that is summarized in the introduction. Uh, but that's what was provided from, from ABAH on the census data, in addition to a segregation report that was provided um, from um, from ABAH as well. Uh, so that's the document in, in total, three-ish, four-hundred-ish pages. Um, but really most of um, where the contention is and where uh, the community is, is most interested in being involved. Um, but really most of um where the contention is and where uh the community is, is most interested in being involved is on the housing strategy and site. So that's what we'll focus on tonight. Um, going into our community engagement, uh as noted, uh we had a number of workshops that were uh conducted at the planning commission and city council, the kickoff, looking at those big questions of the policy topics that informed the draft housing strategy, now just the housing strategy. Uh, and those were really the, the workshops that we had, um, you know, from the dais. Uh, I almost said at city hall, but this is actually our first meeting at city hall. So it's good to be here with you after um many months on Zoom. Uh, in addition, we had a robust and regularly updated housing element update website that provided information uh on including a whiteboard video, um had information on the city's arena. Uh, really as, as much information as the public um could need to just understand what's going on with us. Um, in addition, uh public review drafts were distributed over email and, and posted on the website, uh public review draft, revised draft, adoption draft. Uh, in addition, there was a community housing needs and opportunity survey, which I mentioned previously, which uh received hundreds of responses from the community. Uh, really looking at where the city can focus its efforts, um where it has the ability and the latitude to be able to make those kind of decisions. In addition, uh in promotion of the draft housing uh strategy, we had a number of community events that were standalone events held in the community. At Katati Coffee Company at the bilingual event was held at the Katati Room, uh really to engage the community at the juncture where the questions were kind of being distilled and uh we had a sense of how we were going to proceed, but still had some key questions and decisions to make. In addition, stakeholders were engaged through a series of focus groups that primarily focused on community based organizations. Uh, housing service providers, nonprofit service providers and housing developers, both market rate and affordable. Next slide please. So next, we're going to go into the housing strategy and some of the key changes that have occurred since it last appeared before the commission. So looking at the housing element goals, this is a slight reorganization from the prior housing element goals. There were six in the fifth cycle housing element. Uh, and as many of the environmental sustainability oriented programs had been incorporated and successfully completed. Uh, we reorganized that goal and, and used uh redistributed the programs that made sense to continue and added um some new content, content and programs um throughout uh these five uh housing element goals. Which has now comprised our resilient and safe housing, housing production, affordable, attainable and accessible housing. Affirmatively furthering fair housing and community engagement. Uh, so we really just wanted to take an opportunity to make sure that the goals were really clear and palatable. Uh, previously it was um kind of, you know, just a long sentence or two or three with each of the goals and really just wanted to make sure that all of the programs made sense under each goal and that uh, you know, it was really palatable to the broader community, really understanding what these goals were all about. Next slide please. So looking at the program consider, program consider, excuse me. Looking at some of the program considerations, why some of the programs had changed, really, um, what this comes, excuse me. Um, this comes down to a variety of reasons why the programs needed to be changed in the sixth cycle. As you know, from, from previous presentations, the sixth cycle is very different um than the fifth cycle, as Commissioner Hancock alluded to with the, the sheer heft of the document itself. Um, and in large part, that's because we're responding to a variety of new housing laws that have taken place since the uh beginning of the fifth cycle in two thousand thirteen. Noah mentioned earlier that there are laws surrounding ADUs, density bonus law, parking requirements. Um, affirmatively furthering fair housing being one of them that just, you know, adds a completely different dimension to the document and the level of analysis itself. So laws are really uh the main driving factor as to what is changing program considerations. In addition, input from members of the public and stakeholders, really understanding the priority from all of priorities from all of the surveys and focus groups that we did to make sure that these goals, policies and programs are reflective of the community's desires. In addition, uh responding to housing development targets or the regional housing needs allocation is of essential importance in the housing programs. You can't just have sites. Uh, you have to actually indicate, especially with affordable housing, that you have programs to ensure that affordable housing is actually feasible to develop on those sites. Uh, it, moving into existing and continuing actions of programs, as I noted before, this is an update. Many of these programs, the bulk, I would say about eighty percent of these programs are continued from the, the prior housing element, um just given a little bit of a facelift in some instances. And finally, commission and city council feedback of utmost importance in developing these programs with the big questions. Presentation in February of twenty twenty two, moving into the draft housing strategy in June of twenty twenty two. So the next slide, we'll go into some of the new programs. Uh, really just wanted to focus this here because for the most part, these were presented to the commission in June. There were two new programs that were added, uh so just wanted to make sure to run through those with you. Uh, but really what, what this is looking at is a lot of stuff that is new uh in, in this housing element. Um, and responding to, to those needs on both a local and a state level. So the essential housing bond financing program is a program to improve upon uh the city's performance and the fifth cycle in terms of the preservation of units. Um, this is creating financing program, working uh with a JPA and local partners to be able to rehabilitate units uh and, and enter them into the housing stock as affordable. Uh, the cottage housing program is new, uh building on uh the, the movement that the city made uh during the fifth cycle within the last couple of years to adopt a cottage housing ordinance and also continue to evaluate the efficacy of that program over the planning cycle in the next eight years. Uh, the Santero Way rezoning to affirmatively further fair housing program. Uh, this one is in response to the Santero Way specific plan uh and updates that will be necessary to that priority development area in the coming years. And primarily, uh this is introduced as a program because the city is already in process in terms of considering the Santero Way specific plan and, and updates that may be made to that in the coming years. Uh, but as there are not housing sites that are located uh within the sites inventory in Santero Way. Uh, this consideration is really looking at how to uh, how to pursue housing development over the planning cycle in the Santero Way specific plan. In part because it is located in a moderate resource area. Um, the city contains two resource areas as considered by uh the tax credit. And HCD of the state of California, and those two resource designations are low and moderate resource. Uh, so HCD really wants to see that uh affordable housing in particular, and those sites and projects are not concentrated in lower resource areas. So that's in response to AB six eighty six, affirmatively furthering fair housing law. Uh, so that's one of the two new ones. The other one is to support development of proposed projects. Uh, this project is building on existing policies already in place with the city that if there's one hundred percent affordable uh development that is inconsistency with the city's zoning and development standards. Uh, then the city provides a twenty five thousand dollar grant to support it and its pre-development uh and inability to, to um, ability to move forward as project. So that's one of, one of the components of this, but really uh HCD is looking for cities to ensure that, you know, you're not just putting these sites out there. Uh, or, you know, there's projects that are in the pipeline, but you know, maybe don't have as much development feasibility. And this is really uh detailing the process that the city takes in terms of providing support to developers uh who want to build housing in Katari. Other new programs that were brought, brought to you in June include the pro housing designation. Uh, the city recently received authorization to pursue the pro housing designation and that application is in process. And the next three are really are underneath the goal uh goal uh four of affirmatively furthering fair housing, also known as AFFH. Um, as I alluded to, AB six eighty six was passed in two thousand nineteen to really uh codify on a state level, the federal requirements uh that were established by the Fair Housing Act and bolstered within the last couple decades. Uh, so um, this is the first time that um affirmatively furthering fair housing is uh tracked, has to be analyzed, has to be part of programs in the housing element update. Uh, and each of these programs, anti displacement actions, culturally appropriate facilitation involvement and accessible and transparent information are all really responsive to the requirements of AFFH and areas where the city is, is wanting to make a conservative effort to further for housing. Next slide. So next we're going in to go into the housing sites component and really look at the city's arena uh and where uh sites are going to, where sites have been selected and, and pipeline units that have been established as well. So first, looking at the difference between uh the twenty fifteen and twenty twenty three, fifth and sixth cycle arenas. Uh, as the commission, I'm sure knows, uh this is a substantial increase over the last uh planning cycle. Uh, in terms of the amount of units that the city is required to plan for and demonstrate zoning capacity to accommodate. Um, so the largest increase actually was in moderate income, but overall uh there was a seventy one percent increase in the city's arena from a hundred thirty seven units in the last cycle to two hundred and thirty four in this cycle. And the next slide uh details how the city is able to respond to its arena in this cycle, and this is good news. Uh, in terms of the re allocation of uh two hundred thirty four units, uh they're broken out into four different income categories, very low, low, moderate and above moderate income. Uh, however, um for the purpose of uh demonstrating psychopacity and tracking arena. Uh, very low income is also split into two categories, extremely low income and very low income. So the city has to be on track uh to uh permit all of these units over the course of the planning cycle. Uh, however, uh in purpose of uh doing the sites inventory and really demonstrating that sites have the ability to develop as affordable housing. Uh, they really just all, the lower income units can be lumped together because they ultimately have to have the same land characteristics. They have to be a certain size, uh at least half an acre, smaller than ten acres. Uh, and generally have to be able to accommodate around twenty units per acre unless the city can uh demonstrate that affordable housing has a history of developing a lower intensity. Uh, so for, just to explain why lower income is, is broken out as one category here, uh but still the city is responsible for permitting and developing extremely low, very low and low income units over the planning cycle. So looking at this, uh in terms of pipeline projects, really the only area where there is uh a shortfall, if pipeline projects was all we were looking at here and not considering ADUs or housing site. Um, the city would be in, in very good shape, uh more than five times its above moderate income allocation. And would have a small buffer on lower income and just would have that shortage for moderate income. Uh, once you move into the projection of accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units over the planning period. Uh, this is based on a couple of things. One is that it's based on the average of how many ADUs have been permitted uh over the last four or five years, at least five years at this point. Um, it's hard to, hard to tell because at first it was three and now we're up to five because we've been here a while. But that's, that's how you get your number. Um, and, and Katari's is thirty two divided by eight, uh which is four. It's a little too late for math for me. Um, our sites guy is not here. He usually does, does math. So, sorry, that math humor there. Uh, I'll save it for Benford. The um, another thing that the ADUs and JDUs are looking at in terms of affordability is uh, is, is based on a survey that was done to see, you know, sort of how are ADUs developing over the course of this planning period? Uh, and that is, that's where you get the thirty, 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 ten. So on average, uh the um accessory, accessory dwelling units in the Bay Area were found to be about thirty percent very low income, thirty percent low income, thirty percent moderate income and ten percent above moderate income. So that's where the income distribution is broken down on those assumptions. Uh, the city has to actually permit those ADUs over the planning period uh or come up with the units elsewhere. So looking after pipeline projects and ADUs, JDUs, uh you're actually meeting all of your arena, but just with a very slim buffer um on moderate. So that's where the housing sites come in uh to provide an additional a hundred and five units. Uh, and with all of that considered, uh the city is looking at eight hundred and twelve units across all income categories uh accommodated uh in the sixth cycle housing element as proposed, uh with a healthy surplus across each of the income categories um of at least sixty eight percent. Um, yeah.
Is it appropriate to ask a question?
Absolutely.
On the um ADUs, if they're being used for short term rentals, do we just not count them as part of our number or is there a process to count them?
Yeah, so short term rental is actually not allowed in Katari at all.
Okay.
So it has to be rented for over thirty years.
But in the other parts of the state, when we're hearing numbers like three, thirty, 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 ten, do they just not count the short term rental ADUs? Or I guess I was just curious about that.
Yeah, so that there's definitely mo- monitoring is coming up a lot. Um, that's part of one of, one of the revisions we made in terms of our programs is, you know, looking at ensuring that ADUs that are permitted are actually, you know, doing sort of, you know, what we're assuming they're going to do. Um, so HCD is really looking for monitoring every two years. Um, sometimes they look about half, half the way in the planning cycle and with ADUs, they said, no, every two years is really what we need here. Um, and communities are doing it in a number of different ways. Um, for the most part, uh there's a survey that's done of ADUs that are permitted, you know. A lot of where that um very low income or low income is coming in uh is, is based on, uh, you know, ADUs uh being rented, you know, either free or at very low rent to a family member. And then that puts that, that into a um, a rental rate that is qualifying yet sort of, you know, it, it is essentially, you know, at the, at the rate that an affordable home would be to that income category.
And on the seven, I think we had last year, we knew that three of them were low and very low. And then the other four, do we just not get a response back from them or?
That's correct. Yeah. So we're kind of building out our program to try to tease out this information. Uh, so that was our first effort at uh surveying all the um property owners who pulled ADU permits in twenty twenty two. Uh, and of the seven, three of which we got uh confirmed responses and that were being rented for.
And then, and is there a process to verify that the other four aren't being used for short term rental?
Oh, so we do have a separate short term rental um kind of monitoring plan. I, I would say it's, it's in its infancy because historically Katari has not had significant amounts of, of short term rental. Um, we do get calls, you know, we kind of direct people who are interested in that towards the bed and breakfast process, which you are allowed to do. If you get a uh approval for a bed and breakfast use permit from a planning commission, then you can use your property for rental for less than thirty days, subject to the rules of a bed and breakfast. Um, we have identified a few parcels or properties that are being advertised as short term rentals, uh but very limited and um not significant number.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good question also on terms of numbers, if you like this property that's being, by store property that's being put in an application, do those numbers get counted or we had a property beforehand that was approved that was smaller? Uh, and somebody's come in with this other proposal, so does, even though that may probably according to. How do the numbers?
Absolutely. And we can actually move to the next slide just because this, this, this feeds in well to the, the, the next slide. Um, so La Plaza View is considered within the, the map of pipeline projects and is factored in in terms of the pipeline projects. Um, because there are two competing proposals, um, you know, when it's already been approved and one that's already underway. Uh, in terms of determining those affordability levels and those unit counts, we essentially split the difference. Um, we don't want to put the city in a position where it's assuming a larger project that's going to put it in a no net loss situation. Um, where it's going to have to accommodate other units um from its sites inventory down the line.
Yeah, I would just add, so the state, you know, they've assigned us our reener number, but then they're looking to us to demonstrate that we have buffers, and that's what Luke keeps mentioning. In each income category, based on the pipeline projects that we have. Uh, one of which is the project that's the La Plaza View project, although we did not count the total number of units that is proposing because to your point, we're not sure that it's actually going to qualify for that number of units. Uh, but then also the uh capacity that we have in our existing undeveloped sites. So it's a mix of underdeveloped and undeveloped properties, projects that we have in the pipeline, uh and then other factors that Luke has mentioned through his presentation.
So when you mentioned the income uh categories, is that based on Katari's average income, county wide, statewide? How do they come up with the numbers to determine what's low income, what's moderate?
So once a year, the state publishes that, but it's county specific. So it's the California Department of Housing and Community Development, so HCD, the state department that's going to review our housing element provides that once a year and it comes out generally in April. So we haven't seen twenty twenty three numbers yet. Um, and it's uh based on family size. And then when you look at a unit, it's uh bedroom count plus one to determine what family or what cat, what family size or category they fall into. For the area, it's the area median income is the, is the terminology that we're looking for. If folks are interested in, and if anybody's interested, I can provide a table of that information that we have.
All right, moving ahead. Um, now we're looking at the map of pipeline projects. Um, as noted in the previous slide, this is really the, the easiest way to account for units. This is um projects that are either proposed or are already approved uh and in the development process. Uh, so this includes a handful of, of projects, uh the Katati Station, East Katati Cottage Housing, La Plaza View, Lascar Lane, Pink Viking, Red River Road, Katari Village and Reds Residential. Uh, and this accounts for the majority of, of the city's units. Um, and most of these projects have, have come to the commission and council, and if not, it's just because they're, they're early in the process, but uh they're far enough along in the process for us to include them in the process, or to include them in our um an, analysis of the regional housing needs allocation.
And I would just add, all of these projects uh are on the projects in progress webpage that the city has for community development.
So next slide. In addition to uh the pipeline projects, we also have selected three housing sites. The last time this came before you in June, there were more sites and they were pulled for a variety of reasons. Some of it was commissioned and council, uh, you know, these aren't the best sites. Some of it was commissioned and council, uh, you know, these aren't the best sites. Uh, another one is we just have a really healthy buffer. So part of this was uh, really just making sure that we didn't have a shortfall in terms of the moderate income arena. Uh, and at the end of the day, it came down to three sites, uh, one on Old Redwood Highway, uh, a portion of the Saint Joseph Way uh, church site, uh, and also a parcel on Lasker Lane surrounding uh, addition, surrounding um, that pipeline development that's included in the housing element.
Uh, Alder, Alder Avenue.
Alder, thank you so much. All right, so with that, um, moving into the next steps uh, and discussion from the commission. Uh, so want to just provide a little bit more on the right, uh, more of a granular view of where we're at in terms of the timeline, uh, after adoption, uh, as soon as possible, uh, we're going to submit this to HCD for an adoption draft for review. Uh, that one is not ninety days as the initial draft is, that one is sixty days. Uh, and we're hoping that certification will come from that sixty-day process. Uh, we'll note that as, as well that uh, the resolution contains language. Uh, so if there's non-substantive changes, uh, the community development director is authorized to make those changes. We've really focused on making sure that if everything that HCD says that has to do with programs or sites is really incorporated into this document, uh, because we don't want to have to make decisions that are beyond uh, non-substantive uh, that the commissioner or the council or the community would object to. Uh, but we also want to be able to have the latitude where if there's really minor changes that need to take place over several hundred pages of these documents, um, that we're able to make those changes and not have to, you know, go back to the com- commission and council and restart this process uh, for sixty days and more. So the recommendation from staff now is to recommend adoption of the housing element to the city council. Uh, from there, we'll have sixty-day review and then uh, based on our track record, um, and what we are, you know, experienced working with HCD at this point, uh, we're really confident that we're at a point where we're making the revisions that are necessary and we're going to receive certification.
And I would just clarify, the uh, the authority to make non-substantive changes is actually designated to the city manager, not the community development director.
Are those primarily the responses that have already been made on these?
No, no, so these responses are, are changes that are before the commission in res- in response to the ninety-day review that we got from HCD, but we're, we're, we're requesting from the commission and ultimately the city council is that if HCD in their, in their sixty-day review identify minor substantive change, non-substantive changes that need to be made in order for them to be able to certify, we're asking for that latitude to be granted to the city manager. So we don't have to come back through a intensive process before the commission and city.
Compliance.
Exactly, exactly.
And then once, if those do come forward, uh, we'll later be notified of what those changes are.
Absolutely, staff will provide a summary with the uh, we will definitely be celebrating ultimate certification. Uh, and we'll come forward to the commission and council, let them know, here's the final document and here's any minor changes that the HCD requested.
Okay, uh, do we have questions or comments from the council? Anything else you?
No.
All right, do we have a public comment?
Uh, thank you Chair Savage, speaking to our Zoom attendees. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Lori, you have the floor.
Hi, um, my question is, I, from what I understand, this is all a plan and has to be allocated and all that kind of stuff. But what happens when? If things don't pencil out, they don't come? Like say, all the ones behind Lowe's don't happen because the West Katari turn um, off one sixteen is, doesn't have a this traffic light. By the way, my parents have been asking since nineteen, my parents went in front of the city council in nineteen seventy-seven to, to correct that West Katari turn. But anyways, um, what happens if we deba- da- deba- they approve the, the plan, but then we don't build? What happens at that point is my main question. Thank you.
Chair Savage, that'll end the public comment.
All right, uh, do you want to provide some clarification?
Yeah, I'll provide a response and then ask Luke. So uh, that's a great question, you know, the city is not a developer, we do not build housing. And so it's our job to remove as much as possible those governmental constraints that, that we've identified as potentially inhibiting housing. Uh, and then do everything we can to try to support the development of housing on the appropriate sites that we've identified and moved zone. But there is a chance that we may not meet our Reno or may not in every specific uh, income category. And so I would just point to the last presentation of the APR. So Table D is a requirement of the APR. And every year we analyze how we're doing in meeting our program implementation and arena. So we're essentially take the effort, uh, and the state asks us to, to track our progress in both implementing our uh, programs and then also in meeting the housing numbers that are identified by the state as appropriate for us. So as we um, progress through this eight-year cycle, if we identify that we're falling short in certain areas, or uh, maybe we're not able to get to certain programs, we can prioritize efforts to try to support that and to respond. So I think it's a good point that while this is a once every eight-year process, uh, we take a look at it every year to see where we are and to check in with the community and the council and commission, and then also with the state to let them know where we are with trying to meet our goals. And just lastly, I would point out, we were able to exceed our Reno requirements and overall numbers, but we did fall short in one category, and specifically that was very low-income units with our last eight-year cycle. And then Luke, I don't know if you want to add anything?
I don't have anything on.
All right, thank you. Okay, do we have any other uh, comments or discussion in commission?
Um, I appreciate the level of shit, a lot of the detail in here. I'm kind of getting overwhelmed with all the data points. I mean, there's one that I picked up on, which is, is that it looks like for inflow and outflow of workers in Katari, you know, we have um, two thousand nine hundred and forty people who come to wo- work in Katari and then three thousand seven hundred and forty-two that move outside Katari. How those numbers get found, I don't know, maybe I don't want to ask. There's a lot of, a lot of data points in there that um, are for anybody who wants to can get well um, over the, well into the, do I want to use the word educated? They could be educated. We can do a lot of analysis, I feel over.
Analysis paralysis.
Yes, I feel overeducated, looking at all of this, too much, a lot of information, yes, so thank you very much.
It's just, I just want to thank you and, and uh, what was really nice is to see all the community comments that were in here and the work you guys did going out to, I mean, even the Halloween carnival. Um, that's what we need to do as a community, we need to try to get this information out. The comments from the public were really very interesting, but it was, there was definitely a focus on, you know, we like the feel of a small-town community, we want to try to maintain that. But at the same time, there was the interest of, we need to also recognize that we need to provide housing for lower-income people. Um, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, a hard balance. Um, you know, what Lori brought up about this plan is that it's a living document, it's a plan that, you know, this is what we'd love to see happen. But at the same time, the final decision-makers really are the property owner and the developers. If they want to do something, they can bring something forward that we can discuss. But at the same time, if they just want to sit on property for ten, twenty years, you know, we can't really force them to do anything. Um, but it's, this is, you know, looking at what our goal is, what our vision is. I think this spells it out very nicely, I think it, you, I really appreciate the work.
Right, and I know a lot of work has gone into this by staff and the community and, and um, many hours, I really liked how the comments from the state were organized and then the responses that you had, great. And that really helped uh, uh, get me up to speed anyway on kind of what we need to do. So if there's no other discussions, do I have a, a motion for the resolution?
Um, move to the next year with the resolutions. Very well. Resolution, move, resolution, the planning commission of the city of Katari recommending that the city council adopt a general plan amendment to update the housing element of the general plan for the period of twenty twenty-two, twenty-one. Affirmatively further fair housing and comply with the state housing.
And do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we'll move to roll call.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gilardi?
Yes.
Chair Savage?
Yes. All right, thank you very much. Uh, moving on then, do we have any reports by staff, Noah?
Oh yeah, thank you, uh, Chair Savage. Just briefly, I, I want to let the community know that the housing element will have a quick turnaround and will be going to the city council on Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, so just a week from tomorrow. Luke will be back with us right here in the same chamber, uh, present to the council. And anybody who's interested should um, take the time to review the council packet, provide any additional comments they may have, or please come to the meeting and, and share their opinion. Um, uh, as is evidenced by the uh, number of folks sitting at the dais, uh, we are short, uh, two commissioners. Uh, and this is Commissioner Hancock's last meeting as a, as a planning commissioner, so thank you so much, Neil. And we do uh, plan on having a little bit of a, a more formal celebration uh, after we get through the meeting and, and we'll work that, those details out with you. Uh, but I just really wanted to say thank you. And anyone who's interested in applying to sit on the planning commission, the uh, application is available on the city's website. You just go to the homepage and scroll down to the banner, uh, it's listed there. And those are applications are due on March thirtieth or by March thirtieth. Uh, so please take the time to find that and apply if you're interested. Uh, and then there, as I mentioned, there'll be two seats there, uh, recommended for appointment by individual council members and then confirmed by the entire council. And then lastly, uh, for anyone who's interested uh, in commission meetings and commissioners, we are going to cancel the April third meeting of the commission. So just know we do not have any items to present uh, on April third. And so commissioners, you all have the night off and the public uh, can stay tuned for the next meeting in mid-April.
All right, thank you, Noah.
Got a, got a couple of questions of Noah. There is a, isn't there a general, ask a couple of last questions from the, um, there's a Petaluma, there's a, um, a general traffic study for uh, south of Katari, isn't there? Um, and I think it was advertised in the press, but really it's, it's from Katari, La Plaza down through Pengrove. And I think it's called the Pengrove Traffic Study, but it's open to everybody to comment at this point. And it really, when you look at it, it's a lot about Katari, even though um, and how di- traffic moves from Pengrove, from Ronet Park down the roads through Pengrove, I think that's why it's called that, but um.
Thank you for advertising that, and I uh, will be sure to get that out on the city's social media pages because that is absolutely critical that folks who live and travel through Katari participate. It's not, it's, I think it's a regional effort, so I'm not sure if it's S C T A or the county that's lead, but I will find out and I will get the word out.
Right, I believe, I know it's been brought up on the Sonoma County Pedest- the Bicycle Committee. And so there's, it's, I think it's county, but which aspect is a county? And then the, the local question, just wondering when the pedestrian and bicycle plan, what the sort of status is and particularly the outreach for the community side? I know there's a couple of.
Excellent question. So as uh, the commission knows and, and some of the public, that we have um, joined with S C T A, the Sonoma County Transportation Authority, to uh, work with them on their regional plan. So they are, they received a grant, they are conducting a regional plan, but then within that regional plan are community-specific plans for the smaller towns. Um, we partnered with them, our staff actually participated in the interview uh, process for the applicants to their RFP to write that plan. Uh, I believe the selection was made, although it may not have been communicated yet, so I don't want to speak out of turn. Uh, but so the consultant has been identified to move forward with that plan. And Katari was specifically identified as the first city to get its uh, individual plan done under that broader umbrella. And so we do anticipate getting um, traction on that in probably the next sixty days. We'll have a formal kickoff uh, community engagement effort and uh, formalize that um, kind of contract and who's doing it and they'll, they'll roll out their engagement plan. Uh, but I appreciate highlighting that because it is critical. And I know we've, we're a little tardy in getting that uh, movement um, going. But I do think partnering with S C T A will result in, in a, a more comprehensive project. Uh, and I'm really happy with the, the level of applications that we got from the consultants. And so I, I think we'll get a really high-level document.
Thank you.
I just want to report how much Commissioner Hancock is going to be missed on the commission. I was a newbie a year ago and uh, I'm an emotional person, so I apologize, but I've really enjoyed your comments and your passion for safety and the passion for the city of Katari. So thank you for your tenure, really appreciate it. All right, with that, uh, do we have any other items received after agenda?
Just say a little thing there that I've, I've been, it's been a deep um, uh, deep education and really been appreciating getting an insight into how everything's worked. Um, and having other people come on to the committee and sometimes get dumped on the deep end and then I've been feeling like over the years I've picked up on some of the stuff, but um, S S U has been a really big resource, the J A P G E P department, uh, an annual sort of survey there. Um, so I will recommend that as a way of just getting an overview locally. Um, appreciated some of the, appreciated the professionalism of the staff and keeping the committee going, um, especially through COVID. I mean, that was pretty amazing, it's a small city, but I think we really had a pretty good way of doing that. So it's been quite a, an education and a tenure. Good luck.
And I, I agree also, as a new one, I was looking forward to working with you. Disappointed, but totally understand that it's time for you to move on. Um, I know you've been involved for many, many years and hopefully that, you know, if you're not sitting up here, that you'll still be out there giving ex- guidance because it's appreciated.
Input.
Right.
Maybe that becomes guidance, I don't know.
All right, then we'll move on to uh, any other items received after agenda posted, nothing? All right, with that, then we'll move to adjournment and um, I'm going to pass the gavel here to Commissioner Hancock to do his final after we get on a uh, a motion.
I move for you to enter our meeting.
And I'll second.